We're gonna get started, guys. We've got a short one. We'll do our training segment of the meeting first. We're gonna do it last of the hearing we've had. So sunshine has put together. We handed out packets last meeting. I don't think anybody brought them all other than one person. So reviewing land use applications is what we're going to start with. We just take a few minutes of each meeting and go through some of the legislative changes in place. Sunshine's put together a little slideshow here.
If you guys don't mind, if you can hear me okay, I'll just stay back here that way and click through everything. Good, good, okay, thank you. So the basics of this chunk of land use legislative update is that pretty much any action y'all can take, any kind of planning and zoning related issue, whether that's a building permit all the way up to subdivisions, are gonna be divided into five categories. And that kind of dictates how they need to be processed, whether that's by staff or whether that's by the commission. So we'll just kind of go over really quickly with the types one through five. For types one through three, the decision is not discretionary. Basically, the decision has already been legislated. If the requester meets the standards that are outlined in state and city code, then their request is approved. Right, there's no discretion, you just got to approve it. The big difference is gonna become in one, two, and three with type one. Those are things that Drew gets to approve. So those are things like building permits, lot determination, lot line adjustments, which they refer to as minor subdivisions, access to a street, things like that, staff can take care of. Type two are gonna be pretty much the exact same types of decisions as far as you have to just do what the code says to do. There's no public hearing required, but they do come before you, the legislative body. Type three is gonna just be our, what do we call it, appeals? So you're only really gonna come across those if somebody doesn't like your previous decision. In addition to appeals, that's also gonna be, if somebody believes they are within the code and the code is just being interpreted incorrectly, that's not really the same thing as an appeal. So those would be a type three as well. Type four and five is where you actually get to exercise the discretion. These are going to be decisions where no factual findings or substantial evidence standards are required to support the legal validity of a decision on type four and five applications. So that's basically you have legislative discretion. So that would be things like general plan amendments, street or public utility easement, vacation, or abandonment. That would also include things like zoning code map amendments, annexation, land use ruler ordinance, code amendment, and development agreements. Now, the big difference between type four and five is that type four actions are completed by you, the legislative body. So general plan amendments, public utility easements. Whereas type five need to be reviewed by the commission, you need to give a recommendation, and then it needs to go to council for the final decision. So in the slideshow, which I printed out for everybody, it's kind of small, but I'll also send it out. There's the table that breaks down all of the different approval types and puts them into their code. So you can check out anything you need to there. And then the last slide here, oh, that's nice. So this is a QR code that links to the packet I've provided for you and also has the video embedded from the 2023 legislative update where they specifically deal with reviewing land use applications. So sorry, I want to go through that really, really quick, that way in case you have any questions, Drew can kind of elaborate.
So probably go, well, not probably, encourage you to go review this video because there's a lot of things that have changed as far as the 2023. I think a third of the legislation changes at the Capitol was due to land use codes. So there's a lot of changes that'll take place through what you guys have been traditionally seeing as far as preliminary flats, final flats. Those will no longer by law be allowed to come to the planning and zoning and city council bodies. So a lot of the things that we have done in the past have been preliminary and final flat approvals, but those will no longer by law. So just encourage you to go brush up on these legislative changes and so you're aware of them and not caught blindsided when things don't come through. Anyway, the packets are there for you to review, to take home and digest. We're gonna do a partial training each month on different land use. We picked this category and there's a bunch more, but we just picked this one because it's most relevant to you as a planning commission to review the land use application. So we'll just digest a little bit at a time, do a little training each meeting. Any questions? Okay. If not. We have a quorum now, so we don't have a chair yet. And that is number one item on the agenda today is to nominate and appoint a chair, a commission chair. So. I'll leave you with that.
Certainly, I'm not qualified nor wish to, but I'd like to nominate Dale Troy.
Yeah, let's call the meeting in order first, sorry. So any of you can call the meeting in order right now because we're not, we don't have a body yet, so.
I can all the meetings order. And then I would like to nominate Dale Troy.
I second the nomination.
Take a vote.
Any other, any other nominations?
Let's see. Yeah, let's take nominations first and then vote first, last, and last first. So any other nominations?
I move the nomination season by acclamation. The point to nail drive this.
Probably have to take a vote anyway. But let's take a vote as well. Randy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
And Kyle?
Hi.
Dylan, doesn't matter, you're anybody. See what happens when you show up?
Did I take over minutes? So he's gonna need to do roll call, or was that kind of a roll call right there?
I would say that's.
We should get a roll call.
Okay.
So minutes.
We're gonna go over minutes from last meeting.
And everyone has.
Does anybody have any changes?
I remove that we accept the minutes as they were presented to us. We usually accept speed.
No, you don't need to be here to second the approval of the minutes, so.
So even though he's on roll call, he changed that.
That would be an error, so that does need to be corrected.
Oh, just leave me out there.
If this commissioner remembers, Kyle, John, and Keith Gudspeed were not present.
Oh, yeah.
I gotta read further, thank you.
He called us out.
Okay, so no corrections then?
No corrections. I move that we accept the, what do we do?
Keith moved, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Subdivision preliminary flat, Hidden Lake subdivision.
Well, this is, this is the area that we've been accessing the last seven months. You guys have seen this progress through your body and through city council. They have a preliminary flat that's gonna be up to you for preliminary approval during the preliminary final. Just when we will do our review, the engineers will do the review and study sewer and watering. And everything of that nature. We'll make a note before we get started why, we'll kind of go over this plan and the phases according to your. You know, the street lighting and hydrants have not been included on this, please, you guys catch that. We address before the final.
Can you scroll that down for me?
Thank you.
That should work right there. So this is phase one, is what this is. We're expected to be allowed in one to two, speaking of two to three years on this phase, is what the plan is. The second phase is up above, that would actually be, we probably won't even look at doing that for another five to six years on that one. So on that part. Anyways, we have two entrances. One is gonna be located at the north end of the property. And then we have another one that is located at the south entrance. Ryan Ross has sixty foot easement that's coming in on the west side. Perfect. And I talked with him today, and he is actually going to finish that out and probably we will pack it into ours. So that'll give us three accesses in and out of this property. This development. So out of a unique development, it's all ski lakes. What will be is the home to back up to them. Be a cadence system that runs down each lake. So the people that live there, we're gonna try and market individuals that work remotely. These are individuals that are probably moving from like Utah, Salt Lake County. That's what we're gonna try to market, so their line of work is not tied to the UN basin call. So help bring in some revenue into, in the UN basin. Questions?
I didn't study this well enough, but is it out on? Oh, yeah, we're getting back where you used to live, is that?
No, it's further out, north or south of where he's from farming.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, that's. Pole Line and Four Thousand West. So you were.
Okay.
This build right here is what you were looking at, and that, so there's about fifty acres right there. Johnson Water Building right here, I Oka Man, Hundred Forty. Yeah.
And your access, you're right next to Johnson Water, right?
Yeah.
And so. The state is all in agreement with that type of an access onto that intersection?
Yeah, it's far enough away.
I talked to.
And he suggests that would be fine, it's far enough away from the light. The only approval we need would be that we get some water and Dale to access it through that. Do that easement, this is what we're gonna do, that approach. So if it goes forward that way, great, if it doesn't, then we can use Ryan Ross's access because it'll be a sixty-six wide through that, then it'll come out on Four Thousand. Then it'll come in, that'll be this two for sure, and we would like to have three.
Where's the sewer for this going?
Sewer right now is in the airport, right here, Three Thousand West. It'll be extended along Two Thousand South to the new development and sized to handle the future annexation boundary that Roosevelt City has set as well.
So is it gonna have to be pumped, or there's enough flow?
They're looking into the possibility of pumping some of that until they get surveyor on the ground, Troy, I guess.
So. This is relatively flat, this piece of ground, I can tell you that it basically flows this way and a little this way. This, this ground is flat, so I mean. You're gonna have to start back here at one of these manholes down here by the axe throwing thing or something. Wherever your twelve inch is, I mean, you got sewer all the way out here, but it's not sized appropriately. So they're gonna have to pull whatever manhole has twelve inch in it, I'm not positive yet, but.
It's back, it's back to the west, Troy.
Somewhere here. Anyway, wherever that is.
It's DNAs, where are the twelve?
So I've located all the manholes, so I just haven't bit them. Start there, come over here, come in to Wyatt's thing here. That's what that other thing was showing, this is phase one, or excuse me, two? There's gonna be a sixty-six foot wide road that accesses from Pole Line, which will have the sewer. Everything will come in at that point, or come out, whatever, you wanna put it.
Yeah, the sewer will be exiting out onto Pole Line, and then from that point, you can.
I would assume, yes, there's gonna have to be some kind of lift there to. I wish it was dry.
So. Keith, they won't actually be crossing Dry Gulch, and that's not Dry Gulch Creek, that's just a tributary. But all the homes will be on the north side of the wash there.
This, so the sewer's not coming across here, there's two streams, pretty good streams of water coming across James's piece right now. Those are the two that the sewer's gonna have to cross.
Oh, that's, that's not Dry Gulch?
No, Dry Gulch Creek is further to the.
Closer to the airport?
It's. Let's see here.
Are you talking a ditch?
Oh, that is Dry Gulch, according to the.
So this.
I thought it was Dry Gulch.
So the one that they're.
It separates the two halves of your plan there.
Okay, you're talking this further north one, I was talking the further north one, I thought you were mentioning.
Yeah, the south one will actually be turned into green space, like plants and buildings and trees.
This one here, the further north one is the Dry Gulch, I thought we were talking about the further south one. This is just a tributary wash. Their road does cross this one here. Oh, sorry, this one here, I'm getting confused. This one here is the tributary that the road crosses, the sewer will not be crossing this one. The sewer will be crossing the actual Dry Gulch Creek to the north.
It's about seven feet lower than the. This is actually pretty flat from here to here, it's a couple of feet maybe, but there's about a seven foot drop. To get into the, the flow line of that creek, but. But that's, that's engineering's problem.
And then these ski lakes, where are they gonna be filled with?
Water, basically water coming from, it'll be the water shares that we bought with property.
I'm just curious, are they now?
Anyway, that's what we're gonna do, so. The ponds will be lined also, so we don't.
I'm curious about one thing, so on this phase one, when you start building, I mean, are you gonna wait to fill out those lakes until you've built around them, or is it gonna be just all at once?
Yeah, so the idea is we're gonna probably start digging in the fall. And basically, you know, we need prep and ready, get them lined, and then we'll start building this one. And then finish building this building. And then from then at that point, you can finish all the roads off, sewer, but the lakes will be there.
I would make one note as well, let me get back to the. So phase two, we're not considering for the approval tonight, that'll come at a later time. Jim Patrick currently owns the property now. We're just preliminary for phase one with the intent that phase two would come later.
And I can go, this road right here, sixty, this one sixty-six, 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 sixty-six up. Everything else is fifty-six wide, which meets your standard.
Yeah, for the Roosevelt City.
These, these right here will be the W O, in my mind, stands for walkout. Will be some, some plan to make those.
Yeah, we're gonna work with. Actually, see, we can relocate the creek, basically, there's rain there. And ponds there that actually have walkout basements, they sell. Walk up here. On this section right here, the houses will have walkout basements. And then this part right here will be all green space. And we'll kind of slope it down towards it so that people can actually, from anywhere in the development, they can walk through along the creeks as a walking path, come back over here. We're actually talking about putting a park over here, playground park, probably in this area is what we're doing. We've got like basketball courts and play area here. And then over here, this will be a pavilion with the public bathrooms, outside showers. The idea is this lake here will actually be, you could rent it. So if you had Roosevelt City, the church event, corporate event, they wanted to reserve that, they would be able to. And they would have the pavilion and everything there, and then public parking is just right across the street. That's where it's located at.
What, what are the winter time of these lakes, you're gonna be able to keep them full year round?
So the idea in the wintertime is we'll actually probably drop the water down ways in them and freeze them, and then people can walk, ski on them, basically, ice skate, excuse me. Kind of give them a dual purpose, is what we were thinking of doing with them. So, yeah. Yep, that was kind of the idea on it, to do with it, so.
What does that say on the bottom left, that little empty space, the, you have a bigger lot, bottom left, right there? What's that, no, next to that long skiing space, yeah.
It's. IP, it's right here.
IP, okay.
Oh, yeah, so currently there's an irrigation line that owns the west side that helped farm this. That's gonna stay in place, and it currently drains out into the gulch right there, so that's about that. So it's gonna stay in the easement, sorry.
No, you're good. So we're gonna leave this as a path. It'll be twelve foot wide, it'll be gravel, so the individuals, anywhere in here, they can walk down here if they want to, and then they can walk along the creek, basically, and then they can exit back on and go anywhere in the neighborhood. That's kind of the idea, that'll allow us to access that too if we have to do repairs to any of the lakes. That'll allow us to access that too, if we have to do repairs to any of the lakes, these lakes will actually drain into each other. We'll be able to pump them into each other, and then if we need to to drain them for repairs and stuff, we can isolate it and drain it out into the gulch for repairs.
So I'm guessing that this isn't like a a public, these aren't gonna be public streets, since this is an HOA?
We're we're gonna do an HOA on it, that's correct.
So who in that, I guess the HOA takes care of the the roads and all that ones?
No.
This city still does.
Just the roads and the infrastructure, the HOA will be responsible for the parks, the the water.
Parks and the waterways and stuff like that, yeah, that's correct.
As far as the infrastructure goes for the the public, will be roads, water, sewer, actually sewer and and roads. Johnson Water will be servicing this with their.
With their water district, yeah, their water. And they're gonna actually bring in water from this side and the other side of the pole line. And link them together, there is, uh, was brought to my attention, there's a pressure difference, so we've gotta work on that. Uh, but that'll provide all of the drinking water throughout the the development.
So can you use that end of gulch water, that Dry Gulch water for recreation? You can, huh, so you can sell it to frat companies too?
That's not recreation.
Yeah, yeah, we wanna keep it with the problem.
If you, there is another sewer line on the other side of the airport. There's actually sewer that that comes up where they did that new, all them new like behind Western Chemical and that. That is another sewer line that was supposed to be stubbed across.
Yeah, in in here, we're we're calculating, don't hold me to this, but we're we're figuring we're gonna be eight inch in this development here. And then as it goes out into the second phase and all the way to pole line, it'll get a little twelve inch at that point to handle. And then additional growth, because these neighbors over here, they're actually talking about annexing in also. Because they're interested in the sewer and they wanna be part of Roosevelt. So there's several of them here that are actually talking about it.
I'm assuming storm drainage is going the same way, right?
Well, I would.
Well, I guess it'll be split, right?
Yeah, well, and and that's what Eric, the old Jones in the Mills, they're trying to figure out, Kyle, where. Um, where the water's gonna flow, and then some of these lots might disappear, become a contention pond. So that's.
Anyways, and if that's the case, cause it does, if I might correct, it slopes this way. So if that's the case, we may end up using like these two lots, put them into a catch and a grass area, and then this can be tied together. And usable space is what we're trying to do.
How many lots are in this phase?
Uh, I believe there's ninety-two.
And then how many are in the other phases?
Currently, right now, there's about two hundred and thirty-two.
So is there any plan for um, commercial property out there, or gas station, convenience store?
I talked. Yeah, I talked about maybe putting a little restaurant over here, be kind of a unique place, but it's kind of like drew drew my attention, it's a little bit out of the way. Um, can you scroll down to phase two for me? She scrolled up, keep going. So we're talking about doing, uh, this would actually be these areas up here, would probably be multi. Like condos and townhouses and stuff like that, that's kind of what we're talking about, doing that for that area. Um, and then from this point, it would actually uh, start and get higher end as it goes back into phase one. To tie in together, that's kind of what we're talking, but no, I don't have any plans for a gas station or convenience store or anything like that. That would be more out on forty, I think, and maybe Jim Taylor's property. By Johnson Water may be a good place to.
Keep in mind, we didn't zone this in R one ten, so any multi-family would have to come back for his own change.
Yeah, for later, for later use, yeah. Oh, um, I, do you mind scrolling back to phase one for me? Right there's perfect. Um, I'm interested in zoning this, I know that you guys don't have this yet, you haven't defined it. Uh, short-term rentals, is kind of what we're thinking about, Airbnbs, um, for this lake and also this one. Um, anyways, the public parking is located up there. And this right now is actually s- set for like a RV pad, because it's underneath the power lines. We didn't wanna waste the space, but we could actually very easily turn that into public parking also in that area. So that would make sure that nobody's on the street, these will all be two-car garages, and they'll actually have a, you'd be able to park. Four cars off the street on the property, in the garage and on the driveway. So. Anyways, but yeah, we named uh, Spring Lake, Pebble Lake, pub, Pebble Lake, so don't mean. Lily Lake, Moss Lake, and we did Spring Lake Road, uh, Moss Road, Lily Lou. Uh, Pebble Lane, we've also kind of coordinated with the, kind of tied it together, so give a little more character, is what we've done.
So, as I've been on this, but I'm assuming all roads will have.
That's correct, yeah, in in phase one, we're planning on doing all curb gutter and sidewalk, is in the plans to do it. Um, if you could scroll down for me to phase two. Hey, scroll up, anyways, what I would like to do, cause this road will be coming through, this is all Roosevelt City, um, we're gonna. Develop this out, but what I would like to do is this will be sixty-six wide. Um, but we would like to hold off on the curb and gutter if possible until we actually do this phase. But as soon as we hit phase one, it'll be curb and gutter and sidewalk completely, hundred percent, there's no phases in this development, it's all gonna be done at once. So everything will be complete, and it'll be just lots sitting for people to buy.
Yeah, do that.
Yeah, so that's what I would like to propose to you guys, to, you know, also keep that in mind, that's what we would like to do, so then when we're done with this one, and we move to this one. And we'll do curb and gutter and sidewalk in it.
And there'll be two hookups on that sewer line right there going into that future, when you put that sewer in.
Right here, this one, so we're running, there'll be stubs out, is what they'll be on it.
So like if Jim wanted to take ten acres of building, would they house there, it's good?
Uh, yeah, we could work out something with him if he wants to, or what, you're gonna be there too? In the house also, uh, so, the idea here is the roads will actually go all the way through to four thousand. Each one of these do, they dump out onto four thousand.
So will that be stubbed down when you put the road in?
Here, yeah, that was the plan, we were gonna stub it.
Most likely a manhole will be.
So will there be water in Roosevelt City, water, power, gas?
We're we're getting off track, that it's not a public meeting, um, as far as this goes. Uh, an open public meeting, I guess. Um, so do we need to approve anything on this?
So for the preliminary design, we do need to have an approval to move forward, that way we can get to the engineers and everything. And get the the sewer and water and everything back to you guys for final. Um. We do need to, you do need to make a decision on this roadway here, everything else within this subdivision, obviously, we'll definitely have curb, gutter, sidewalk. But this one, you guys need to give a direction on, and ultimately, city council will have to say whether or not.
On on phase two.
Yeah, the section right here.
With your recommendation, we'll take the city council, but ultimately, they will have the decision on whether or not to.
And just to clarify that, you you're saying you're not gonna do curb and gutter on phase two until you get to phase two?
Yeah, which will be about five to six years, that's the plan. So the road will be all set for sixty-six wide, and it'll be set for curb and gutter to be installed when we do it.
Yep.
Okay, attack one thing in here.
Yeah.
On this, on this Dry Gulch sewer line that needs to go down pole line road, is that, that's part of your planning to install all of that, or?
Yes.
Is the city expected to do something with it?
Well, Drew said that we could actually maybe propose that if you guys are willing to pay for the upscale, for the up-sized pipe. And we're paying for the labor, yeah, something that we need working on. Cause it will benefit you guys to do it right, first time, we're already in there. That might be an option to throw in.
So that'll be part of negotiations with the city and with the developer, as far as what. Is fair to the developer, and making him design something larger than what his subdivision would allow. Could potentially be negotiated with the city, so.
But it allows for future growing, other than yours.
That's what we would like to do.
We only do it once, we size it accordingly for the adaptation area.
Obviously, it's a good area to grow, it really is, so we might as well do it right.
Are there any other questions with the? I think I'd I'd motion that we vote on it, do we have to take a vote on this one?
Did you take a motion to approve?
I'd motion.
Recommendation with the road.
I second that, I second it with the.
You you can't, you're a chair.
Okay, I'll motion to approve with the with the recommendation, that road be done with phase two.
Curb gutter side.
Curb gutter sidewalk.
What should you approve with the?
Yes, just to make the road through phase two.
Read that again.
Has that been done elsewhere in the city? South Town, is South Town done without curb gutter and sidewalk, and then created later?
South Town was built with curb gutter sidewalk?
Was it built with curb gutter and sidewalk, did we require the development to?
As it developed, they put it in.
As it.
What do we call this road?
As it develops, as it moves forward.
Clarification, I don't mean to get in here, but the way I'm understanding is, they're gonna bring the road down at. Sixty-six foot wide, I think it's forty-four feet of asphalt.
Yeah.
But the intent, as I understand what West, as this develops out, it's all gonna be developed curb gutter sidewalk, he just wants to bring in. A sixty-six foot wide road easement without curb and gutter until what time they begin phase two, and then all that will be done with.
That is right, yeah.
Yeah, they're not trying to admit it, they just wanna make curb and gutter home on this road coming, and I don't know where it's coming from.
So so everything, everything. Okay. Everything from the north end of phase one will have curb and gutter, right? And then everything north of phase one is, in phase two is gonna be just a road.
Yeah, phase two.
Yeah, phase one, south, will be curb and gutter, and then the pole line will be later.
That's right. And as about road, Greg, he's off, but we actually sent it for thirteen years.
And as it develops, I will ask.
We we gotta stop that, there's no reason to do curb and gutter at this point, until we're actually ready to start, you know, finishing out the development.
Part of your answer in on South Town, I, they paved and built out as they as they went, they didn't improve a road without. Housing going down South Town, but I'm aware.
And just, just one other thought, this is, this is just a rough sketch up here, gentlemen, this isn't, it's not.
To scale?
Not, well, no, it's more, it's to scale, but it's not. Wyatt has the discretion after he buys it, or you know, Jim, whoever owns it, to alter that, you're, you know. That's just a a a forward look, this, this is what you're approving, this is going to likely change.
Yes, so I have the um, smooth motion to approve with the expectation that curb gutter and sidewalk will be constructed on the road to phase two. Prior to the construction of phase two, with curb gutter and sidewalk being constructed on the phase one portion of the road, along with phase one construction.
Yes.
So there will be forty-four feet of pavement there? Yes, yeah, we want everything asphalt.
And if that still avoided, I mean, still approved, well, I second it, is for that as well.
Call a favor? I think.
Down on the end?
Um, I.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, and answer that the Ren's question.
Great, I voted already.
Well, well, I didn't wanna interrupt your vote, but before shit. Well, before pole line, while I didn't wanna get too involved in here, but before pole line. Uh, as subdivisions were developed in that, the sewer, the the sidewalk and curb and gutter. I think the curb and gutter was put in, but the sidewalk was put in as each lot was developed. When pole line came along, it was required, and it's still required, that as the subdivision is developed, sidewalk and curb and gutter. Were required to put in on each lot before the lot is sold as part of the subdivision. Uh, South Town was not required, but pole line was, pole line started the requirement, all subdivisions required, but incurred better sidewalk. As part of it before it's approved for lot sales. So that might help your question, but before pole line, it wasn't required, but from pole line on. Is required curb gutter and sidewalk be done on all lots before the houses are developed will be accepted. Does that have clarification of these?
Okay, Altitude Premier?
Okay.
Just me.
Okay. I'll pull it up on the on the G I S U.
So this is State Street here. Uh, this would be our. Meadowbrook subdivision, if you get your bearings there. Okay, everybody know what we're talking about?
It's right to the south.
Is that the section that was already?
Yes, it's it's already got a prelim, or a flat that's been approved, they will be coming in for amendments though as well. Flat amendment with the process, they're here as well for a preliminary approval. And. Craig is here to represent, uh, oh my heavens, Rob McNeil would be the developer with with the.
Altitude.
Partners, I believe, Altitude. So. Craig, why don't you get up and give us a little?
Sure, I I brought paper copies, I don't know if you'd like to look at that, follow. So I speak, but I brought paper copies. So, I'm very networked, I've worked for CRS engineers. And Altitude Premier, which I'm unable to hire us to help us with the subdivision. Um, so as was stated, South Town phase one is just north of here, and so. It's about twelve hundred south of State Street, um, between twelve hundred south and Dry Gulch. So this uh, this property, as was stated, is already had phase two back in two thousand and six. It was approved, um, as a flat, so it's recorded with the Duchesne County that way. Um, but we plan to modify that subdivision. Lot size we're shooting for, minimum size is six thousand, we're keeping it seventy-five hundred. Uh. Or that's the target we're shooting for, of course, you know, however the property lines work out. Sometimes you can't hit exactly seventy-five, but all of the lots are at least six thousand square feet. Um, these roads are sixty-six feet wide, uh, the main. Streets that connect on State Street is designed into. The main road to the east as well, um. The property to the east, when it gets developed, we're leaving. Available. And then there is a fifty-six foot wide wide road on Fifty East, Fifty East is only fifty-six feet wide. Uh, there are sixty-two lots in there, um, and. We have. Uh. Sewer, water, pressurized irrigation, communications and gas utilities. Plan to go in there. There's also stormwater, um, when we met with, uh. There's also stormwater, um, when we met with, uh, when we met with Drew, uh, we, obviously stormwater will be draining into Geigold Creek, but we are going to be putting. A detention pond in, uh, which means you hold the water for, at, at whatever rate it comes in, the storm, and then you release it into control rate. And also allow seven to seven. So we're going to do that on the southeast corner of State Street, feel as we storm, because, uh, cheats. So, um, down the right hand, lower right hand corner there, there's a retention pond planned, now you can see, um, the grading is gonna have to take place to make that happen. But, uh.
The, the lots, um, thirty-seven, uh, thirty-four to thirty-seven, how close are they to the, doesn't the city own property right there?
Yep, they're right on the boundary.
And then do, do any of these hit the gulch, or does the city own property all the way down that area?
So, so the city's property is actually right here, you can see that, this is actually city property and it comes out to, uh, it's gotta be right here. Um, there's, there's another sheet, I think it might be sheet two, that shows where that is, right here, this'll show it, that's the property corner that we found.
Okay.
For the city property.
So what do you plan on doing with the rest of that land right there?
This, this is just, it's, these all back up like you asked, to answer your question, it's a great question, those all back up right to that where it gets real steep going down into the creek. So, um, there is about, it's eighteen feet from here, from the creek down here to basically the top of that hill.
How many?
About eighteen feet.
Eighteen, oh, and altitude?
Yeah, elevation. So, um, this is really, we're gonna put a pond in here and grade it for that, but, uh, again, we gotta stay away from the bank. The other thing we noticed out there, um, was on that hillside, obviously that's been used in the past at some point. And so there's tires and, and things like that, it's really, it's really not, um, suitable for building right there for anybody on that slope, so.
Did, did that used to be the sewer ponds, or it wasn't a dump, right?
Up on top, sewer ponds, up on top where, where the main development is, was sewer ponds, this traditionally through this whole area, Craig's right, it was used as a dump years and years ago.
Yeah, on the other side of that though.
Well, it had a, somebody, like I say, a bunch of tires and, you know, things that don't need to go as well.
Do we know what the city's plan is with that property there?
So it's gonna be part of our, our master plan for the Cottonwood Trail Loop System.
Okay.
And we've talked to the developers here, Craig and, and, uh, and Rob, uh, helping with easements through the gulch area to get over to Fifty East and tying into the Cottonwood Trail on that side. This would be a, a trailhead of sorts, uh, with marking and potentially a restroom for future. And the developer has agreed and was excited to help us with easements through that area, I think it would enhance and, and, uh, help out with property values, so.
Okay. I have a question on these lots twenty-eight through twenty-five, if you go to the last page on this, it looks like you guys have elevation in there. What those lines are?
Yeah, there's, there's topography shown there, yeah.
So I'm assuming that's the edge of the hill, right, where your, your topography comes up next to those houses?
Yeah, yes.
Is that gonna be a concern at all on those houses, foundations, all that stuff, I mean, in a, in a serious, you know, we saw on the lots at front this year, obviously, so.
So we, um, we're getting into the engineering part of it, but yes, that's gonna have to be engineered and, and like I said, that soil, we don't know what's under it, there could be, you know, it could be dust residue. So what's gonna have to happen on that, we, we do have a geotechnical, plan to do a geotechnical report. Um, if they wanna build there, we might have to do some special considerations foundation.
Gotcha.
And, uh, which can be done, you know, we, it could be as extreme as removing the old soil and putting good soil in, or it could be, um. Maybe put a, put chemical beer down in the good soil and, and bring it up. Or, but anyways, there's a lot of options out there that we'll have to explore before those lots that are, that are particularly on the south is the ones that would concern me the most, but they, um. But they're definitely on that, what we wanna make sure.
Yeah, mainly just those four lots really, I mean, the rest of them are close, but not near as bad, so.
That's a great question.
And that'll be something that'll take place through the permitting process, through our building department as well, if it's, uh, if it's questionable, we'll require an engineering on each lot and potentially. For that, one thing I, before I forget, Craig, they're talking of phasing this fifteen homes for the first phase because of the restrictions of Moon Lake electric power availability. Before they get the substation in south of, of here, their pole line substation. So the first fifteen homes, I believe, Craig, correct me, I think it was gonna be these, these here, right?
Yeah, the ones closest to State Street, um, I haven't identified them yet, I haven't drawn the phase line in here yet. They wanted to approve the entire flat, not just phase one. Okay, taxes on the whole, I guess, but, uh, anyway, they want, because of Moon Lake's restrictions, they, they said that they'd only get fifteen lots this year, so.
So if, if that's the case, are you gonna be, are they gonna be, be developing the entire area prior to building still?
Uh, that, we'll, we'll touch it in phases and, and they'll develop each phase, put all that in, there are some things that will have to be developed all at once, such as storm. That'll have to be done right up front, um, but, uh, things like sewer, culinary water, pressurized irrigation, um, they'll, they'll do what they need to do and then just make it available. For when we get to phase two.
Clarification, my understanding is, on the construction drawings, you're gonna basically have the construction drawings for the entire project, but as development, so that will be approved that way, but development will be in phases.
Will be brought back for the one, as well as preliminary, but the phases will be identified as well.
Yes.
Of Roosevelt City, there's kind of this little road just at the edge of the, uh, the gulch, um, is that essentially where you have River Bend Road, that road here, River Bend Road?
Yeah.
Okay, and I can definitely verify that that was a dump.
So, yeah, this, there, you can see their property, so in general, it, it doesn't follow exactly this path, but it's, it's pretty close. And, and this will be planned where it can extend, there's over here to Fifty East, um, this, this road right here, you can see there's curb gutter, so we designed. This road to come up a little steeper right here, you can see this comes up here, and then it will come almost straight across to tie in right there. That's, that's what we have drawn for you, that you're looking at now.
Let's see. Well, it didn't go a long ways, but it went to a couple hundred yards and, and every Saturday night, Hanger Bothering Company would leave our, uh, broken glass, uh, down and. Add it to the, all the rest of the tracks that was there.
I believe it, I believe it, when I was walking around, there was a lot of broken glass.
What's the zoning on this right now, do we know?
R one six. R one six, uh, so they're, they're over there six thousand minimum on the, on the lot sizes. One question, Craig, that I'm looking at here, do these, what are we doing with the excess property?
It's just gonna be open space, I mean, there's, they can't do anything with it really, so, they're, they're, part, they're, they're, part of it we use for, uh, for that retention pond. And they have that area that they really can't build on.
It looks like that's all on the face of that hill, right?
Pretty much.
Yes. There, you really can't build there, you can't put a park in, you can't put really anything.
You can, you could, you could, there, right?
Question would be, I guess, who would maintain ownership? Who would maintain the property, if it doesn't go to these lots, who's going to be responsible for that?
I haven't had that discussion with anybody yet, um, you know, if, if, if the, the city wants to put trails in there, we can work, you know, about that. But I haven't had that discussion, then, so I don't know.
And I think what Drew's alleging too, there's probably an back lots on the other side of ten eighty that are being, just, and probably, so I think, I think that needs to be addressed in design, it's gonna be, I think that's what Drew's.
Yeah, it, it'd almost be better to just extend the lots and sell them as, as excess property to the lots. Uh, that way at least we have somebody on record as the owner rather than the developer.
Yeah, just lot sizes, I think the thing he doesn't like about lot sizes is it's so big, um, that they'd be hard for him to sell.
Well, I guess that would pose the question, what is he planning on doing with that excess property then, 'cause somebody's gonna have to.
Maintain.
We'll have to ask that question, yes, 'cause I don't really answer certain things.
Sunshine, can, can you scroll down to one of the other maps, the, that's that big dash line, what, what's the big dash line through the middle of that?
That's the original, uh, that, that's what's plotted as currently as phase two of the subdivision, that is unrecorded Duchesne County, that's the flat we're going to. So that's the. That's how it's recorded in the county, right?
And so this was all recorded twenty years ago, when Bob West was involved in all that, was that part of the South Town that was approved at that time?
I don't know the names, it was South, it's called South Town Phase Two. But Rockbank, I have seen, I've seen that name, but I don't know, I'll bet it comes all property to the east of this. This might have been Bob and he sold it off, we're, we're not sure.
Well, David Jimenez acquired a bunch of that from the, and actually developed the South Town, and then he stole it and brought back and acquired it, I believe.
And that Rockbank doesn't own it now.
So I have one more question, uh, the, does the city require an elevation for the homes, um, to the road, like, doesn't it?
Fifteen inches, I mean.
Fifteen inches higher than the road.
Twelve inches above the curb and a four inch, we, we stay for fifteen inches.
Okay, and, and that's, and is that the road that it's built on, or any road that's, 'cause State Street's quite high?
That's the road to the drainage, so this is gonna have its own separate drainage as far as storm runoff, so if we're fifteen inches above River Bend Road, everything can drain back to River Bend, catch the collection.
Okay.
Drain, not, it's not draining back to State Street.
Okay.
Sewer will be, but they'll have grade on the sewer to flow back to state, it's deep enough, they've.
Yeah, it's the, the man alive, there's twelve one six C D, that's thirteen D D.
And as he stated, some of the major infrastructure will be done, it's not after phase ones, like you were saying, storm drainage stuff that's required, make the place work, they've got plans to address that in, in fifteen, yeah.
Okay. But I, what's the, I moved, I'm only, I'm. Anybody ever motion?
I would move that we approve the. The preliminary plan as a discussion.
With the idea of somebody maintaining the parcel?
Clarification.
Clarification on the maintenance of that piece by the gulch?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Call a favor?
I.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next one up for discussion is the table item that we had last month. The animal amendment overlay district is, still have. Copy that from last, John wasn't here last, Kyle wasn't here, you do have a copy?
It's in this bunch of papers or anything?
No.
Sunshine will run, uh, make a copy.
Well, then essentially anybody in an R.
R, or an R one.
In, in an R zoning, if they have one acre, they can fill their.
To a point.
Yeah, what, what are we talking about when they can, 'cause, I mean, one point five acres and they got, you know, a couple cows was a little.
Uh, no, up to nine months, was it?
So, no, that's the existing ordinance, so, so the existing ordinance for our, our zones are up to nine month old, they can have up to two sheeps, two goats. In the existing R, uh, one, R one six, R one ten, R one twenty zones, the R, R one is the rural residential zone, one acre minimum. And then the, the table kicks in, they can have, depending on square footage, the first twenty thousand square foot they can have this animal group, and it's, it'll be on the table when you look in this packet. So what the recommendation was to amend this, this all stemmed from Greg Buckson, if you remember coming through, they denied his zone request for an R R one. So now they're trying, they're, they're wanting to revamp the, an overlay, animal overlayment district in the R zones with a minimum of one acre. And those animals aren't, the, the groups are limited, they're not as, as, uh, such in the R, R one, or more, but they are similar, but they don't re, uh, they don't allow as many animals in this overlay draft.
It's about half, isn't it?
It's not quite half, but. And it does include chickens.
Thank you. Allowing how much for a home, you, how much do you have, if you have one acre, you have to, how much do you allow for a home?
The size of that.
So, the size of that. Okay, does that come out of your square footage of the animal property?
Technically, yes.
So right, just for clarification.
That's current.
Right now.
The amended thing for what they're proposing on this with the animals, 'cause it's not the same as the R.
So right now there are areas where you're not even allowed to have animals, right?
Uh, then the RM thirteen, eighteen, it's just the R ones, that's hundred percent, twenty, ten, and.
Seventeen point seventeen.
Correct.
So this is the R, this is the R R one that we kind of based this up of, so you can compare the difference on a full fledged R R one. So the changes are. The goats are five in the R R one, there are three on the overlayment district that we're proposing. Rabbits, you can have twelve in the proposed, twenty-five in the R R one, fifty on the poultry and fowl chickens, and only twenty-five in the overlay draft. So some of them are halved, I guess.
But you still have to have at least the one acre.
You have to have a minimum of one acre.
Okay. Say that again?
Excluding the footprint of the house and the outbuild.
And the outbuildings.
Open space.
Okay, um, one more question on that, so, um, lost my train of thought, um, Utah's fence out state, right? So technically fence animals out, not in, does that require, you know, like, somebody can't have free range chickens, obviously, I'm just curious.
It does state in our code that it has to be fenced, it has, they have to be maintained. I believe, I believe the state of Utah's changed that to a fence in state.
Have they? Okay.
I believe.
But it, and it all comes down to nuisance also, I mean, regardless, if it's a nuisance, then, then you lose that anyway.
Right, yes.
So free range chickens. So free range chickens, I would imagine, would be a nuisance to your neighbors.
Exactly.
Yes, right. So this is, this is what's been proposed. Uh, we've had Grant spend a lot of time in drafting this. Uh, we feel comfortable as staff, as comfortable as.
I'm sorry, who's proposing, who's proposing the grant?
Sorry, yeah, the, the city, in response to Greg Buxton's request, there's been others' requests as well. Um, Grant Charles, our attorney, has drafted this and sifted through. We've spent a lot of, of time going through the, going through the draft and, uh, just wanted to bring it to you for, for, uh, approval, or if you'd like to review longer. We did table it last meeting, so you guys could kind of study this, knowing that not all of you were here. But that's where we're at.
I have it to table till our next meeting.
And maybe a point of clarification, I think it came up, maybe. If they have one acre, it can include their house, right? When it comes and, and that, just be aware. As long as they have one acre, they can go with this. Doesn't count if they have a house or outbuild, but when they start counting animals on the other zones, they can't count their area.
So that's a good point to be made. They have to have at least an additional twenty thousand, if you read in I, section I, that's, that's the clarification. In addition to the acre, you have to have that many more square feet for an additional animal group, or one animal in that group. If that makes sense. So the acre would be including in the house, but if you have an additional twenty thousand square feet and want another animal, um, or ten thousand square feet, that kicks in for one of those animals, not the whole group, just one animal out of that group. Just for clarification, that's good, Dean. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and then also, no more than, you can't have more than two animals.
Right, except poultry. You could have two animal groups and poultry, right?
No.
Six chickens?
No, no, this, this trumps the, trumps the.
Okay.
The other existing policy or code on chickens for the R districts, the R zones.
And is this anywhere within the city limits? I, I don't know of any places except on the edges that would have one acre, but.
There are some parcels throughout the city, yes.
Oh, it's anywhere. Okay. We would like to have a little bit of time as well.
Okay.
Would you second his motion?
I would.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Tabled.
Matt, would you like to set a date for that, or should I just plan on the, on the agenda for the next meeting?
The motion included next meeting. Yeah, sorry, yeah.
I'd motion that we commit to making a decision next meeting, if we can do that. We're not waiting further.
Recommendation.
Recommendation. I, I'm for it. I.
I'm for it too, but I, I understand.
Idea. If, if you've got the land and knowing that, I mean, if they become a nuisance, they can, if they get a complaint, then they have to be removed. And so I, I'm, I'm for it if you've got the land to be able to use.
If it's a nuisance, I think, I mean, just somebody says they don't like it, that's it?
No.
I mean, it gets investigated, obviously. You have to call it in and there's a process, but.
Okay.
But, I mean, I, I tend to pick sure that most people have consideration for their neighbors, right? It's kind of common courtesy, so I would say I wouldn't put twenty-five chickens on an acre of property personally, but, you know, there are people out there that would, so. Um, I'm for it too, but I, I agree there's, if you guys wanna look at it further, I, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you can't, you know?
Yeah, let's, let's do it. We'll make, let's go over this week, or this month, and maybe we can find some parcels that would be examples. What it would be. I know there's one up across the street from the park, the, um, it was an acre and a quarter. And then you've got the whole developments all the way around it. That's a lot of land to, to mow.
Yeah. I've got fifteen acres on the north end of town, but I'm so far away from everybody else. I mean, I would like to have a horse there, but, you know, it's, that's another one of those within reason, you know?
And the reason for this request is, on, on the outskirts of town, the RR one zone would be a, an option, cause it does border the land use around in the county that would be, be similar. These areas would not be touching the, the, the RR one or county, so this would be internal in the city.
And this was built because Greg's request for RR one was turned down because it didn't border.
Hey, is that our future discussion?
No. Oh, yes, could be. Yes, you can call that one.
This is the time where you can go if you'd like.
Okay. Do we have a motion adjourned? No, no?
Give me, give me my, my, uh, planning and zoning division manager report real quick.
Oh, okay. I thought you'd been doing, I thought you'd been doing that throughout the whole thing.
So, kind of falls along the lines of, of the discussion we're having with animals. We've, you guys have been brought to speed on some chickens, maybe. We've been having some issues in, in our, I'm sorry, our, our M zones, which are not allowed any chickens and, and the roosters throughout town has been a concern. It doesn't specifically state in our policy, our ordinance, that roosters are not allowed. It just refers to female chickens everywhere in our ordinance. But it does state if it becomes a nuisance, we do have the nuisance clause. So we, we've had some issues where we've had multiple reports on roosters and multiple chickens in, in, uh, an area, a few areas. So what we've, we've had it come to council, we've had, we've had the, uh, the owners come to council and express concern, council members as well, for and against. So what we've come up with is we'd like to take a, a, a poll basically and get some public input on whether they wanna see chickens in all zones, or if we wanna have a square footage, or, or what. So working with Sunshine in the future, I'd like to get that started and kind of see where the direction will go with public input. And then bring it back to the planning commission, um, for, for recommendations to push this up the chain, see what we wanna do. Uh, see what the public would like to have, cause essentially that's, that's who we all answer to is the public constituents of yours and, and our, our, uh, the public as well, so. That would be something that, that I would report on, that that's what we're working on. So look for that in the near future to, to come back to planning zoning for re- recommendations, so. And tiny homes.
Throw that in right at the poll.
I'll just maybe talk it smooth out to the consideration of people, like anybody who would do fireworks at two AM and four AM. I'm agreeing. It matter whether they're a horse or a chicken or, and that happened just all the time this last three days.
Anybody have anything else? If that's the case, I'd, I'd move you adjourned.
Call in, do we vote on that too? Call in favor?
Aye.
Who, who seconded the motion?
That was a camera off.
Do you need these back?
No, I don't.